Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, if we forgive those who trespass against us. And give us not only dedication, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the power, and glory, for ever. Amen. What allegiance do you defy? The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna go ahead and do the first part of the board meeting, and then we have the presentation on the building shortly. Thereafter, we're gonna make this as quick as we can. Rule call.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yeah.
Mr. Yurda?
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do I have a motion in the second to accept the agenda? Rule call, please.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
We are gonna bypass the public participation tonight till we get to the end. We have plenty of time to do that then. So we're gonna go straight to the treasures report.
Okay, I have an approval of minutes from January fourteenth. The regular meeting and organizational meeting. January twentieth, the work session. Approve the financial report for January. Approve the resolution between Rolling Hills and the Gurns County Auditor, as presented, and approve the insurance holiday for March twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion to accept this treasures report? Motion. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Can you hear me without this? Then I'll leave. We're gonna go ahead and skip the standing committee reports also. There isn't any home business. Mr. Dudley, if you would read the recommendations from the superintendent?
I can talk to Bob. Bob?
Yes, we got the superintendent's report. And we have a recommendation from, starting with letter A. It is recommended by the local superintendent nominated by the Educational Service Center Superintendent that the mentioned personnel be employed for the term indicated and at the existing salary schedule pending certification and BCI background check, starting with Blackledge through Wiggins.
I have the, I have A through G, I'm going to the multiple, all the way to G.
Okay. B, we wanna approve the application for early graduation, as presented. C, approve the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three district calendars, as presented. D, approve the maternity leave form for Tyler Baker, as presented. E, approve the amended twenty twenty-one district calendar, as presented. F, approve the amended COVID-nineteen district plan, as presented. And G, approve the bus quote, as presented.
I have a motion to accept A through G. Motion. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion. Few things I wanna say here, so we understand the district calendar is being changed to add... To add two snow days at the end, there'll be make-up days. So that's the change on the calendar. We approved the COVID-nineteen district plan, as presented. I'm gonna let Mr. Detrow explain that.
Sir?
Tessa, there it is. Okay. The, what that refers to is the governor's recent request that we extend days. He's trying to, number one, force some of the schools that haven't been in session back. And he's also trying to make up for lost instructional time. So we really have a few options. We can add days onto the end, create a larger summer school program, add time on to the end of our day. Or we could go back Mondays and then use that along with the after-hours things we already do. It seemed like an easy solution. We could start the fourth nine weeks on March fifteenth with students going five days a week, which would meet his requirement and also we feel is best for students.
So what item F amounts to is starting the fourth nine-week period on March fifteenth. The school district will be going back to five days in session. Instead of having Monday as a off-campus day, it will be a live-in session day. So starting on March fifteenth, we go back to five days a week. That's what we're approving on item F. Any other discussion on any of the items?
What's the, the bus quote, was that...
Okay, that's a good question. I meant to cover that. We received a grant for forty thousand dollars towards a new bus. Buses generally run around eighty-five thousand dollars, eighty to eighty-five, depending on what you order. So we have been asked to cover the other half. And we thought with the state paying for fifty percent of a bus purchase, it'd be a good time to purchase a bus. So that's what item G. It's to accept the forty thousand dollars from the state and add the remainder and buy a new bus.
We were gonna have to buy one next year anyway. So we bought one six months earlier and got half price.
All right, we were already planning on buying one. So this just covers half the cost of them. Any other questions on these items, A through G? I have a motion in the second. Rule call, please.
Hi, Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Item H. Oh, yeah.
Lastly, in the superintendent's report, we recommend two board members for the safety committee, along with the superintendent. So I believe that was...
Darren was on it last.
Darren was on it before. He would like to continue to do that, right, sir?
Yep.
And I believe I'm gonna join him on that committee.
And that's what we're recommending, yes.
Yes. So we recommend that Darren and myself as board members of the safety committee.
Okay, do I have a motion for item H?
I'll move.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Yep.
I have a second. Okay, well, any discussion? What we are doing, we are recommending our two members of the board for the safety committee. We knew one short after a member did not wanna be on it. So do I have, I have a motion in the second. Rule call, please.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Detrow?
Yes.
Okay, we do not have any correspondence or information lightens. There's no need to go into executive session. Do you wanna turn now and do that after? Yeah, we'll probably have to do that after. So now I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Caplet. She is going to introduce our guest here tonight to discuss the building project. And then there will be questions taken after the presentation. If there are any, we have a key in. So we're gonna move down front while they do their presentation.
You ask questions about our building, our projects. When you came in, at the table, there was index cards and pens. If you did not receive an index card and you'd like to get one, just raise your hand. All questions will need to be written. And one of our administrators will come to you and they'll pick up the card so that we can answer your questions after our presentation. So again, if you want to ask a question or if you'd like to leave us your contact information because you want us, you wanna be considered for our advisory committee, that would be happening later in the project, you can put that information on the card. So if you need a card, raise your hand or get you a card and a pen. If you have a question that you would like us to answer, just raise it up and we'll collect it. So at this time, I'd like to turn over the mic to our representative from Fanning Howie Architecture, Interiors and Engineering, Mrs. Mark Worms. He is the Director of Community Engagement with the firm.
Thank you, Molly. I've been here before. Maybe you recognize me, okay? I've been working in Long Candies until, we say, two thousand and fifteen. So we've been having discussions about facilities and how we can help the district. Why don't you go to the next from there? Okay. One of the things they talked about, okay, here's to give you an opportunity and what your Board of Education members wanted to do was share the building opportunity that your district now has. Okay? And besides having a community meeting and sharing that information, one of the other things they wanted to have happen and your district, some of the district administrators put together a survey to get some feedback from community members. How many of you saw the survey and participated in the survey? Can you raise your hand? Okay, about half of you. Okay, that's pretty good. That's pretty good. They got some good results, okay? I think overall, ninety-six percent were positive and four percent were negative. Okay, so we, I think, have gotten to two of the major objects, or should say goals, that the board had for themselves. So this is a unique one, okay? For many districts, they have to raise funds. At this time, you have an opportunity to deal with your building project with no new taxes. And I know through experience, and I didn't say anything about my background, I had thirty-three-plus years in education, ten years as a superintendent. And I ran a couple bond issues and I've run numerous tax issues. I won some and I lost some. And the thing is, anytime you use the word tax, T-A-X, a lot of times the first thing you hear is new. And I understand that. That's why we have a hive field, one of the greatest countries in the world, because you have an opportunity to go in and express your own, okay, opinion through the ballot. And that's important. But this time, you are looking at addressing the facility needs with no new taxes. Now, this is, I'm gonna say, basically, this is a surprise. You're gonna be able to work with the state, okay? And I was surprised because some of the communications we had with the state over the last year, and maybe a year and a half was that, or it would be two, three years down the road before funding would be available through the state. And then Candy and I were just trying to verify that with her. She, at the end of twenty-twenty, was working hard to close out the calendar year. And she kept getting calls from the ORCC rep. And she finally answered that. And they came across in early part of January and said, no, we have money available for you now. Okay? And they basically said that you need to take advantage of this or suggested that because if you don't, we don't know when that money will be available for you again. Okay? And the rep, Mr. Pransol, Bill Pransol is the rep here. He said, and I can't, I can honestly tell you, I don't know if that's in another year, two years, three years, four years. Okay? So you have an opportunity now to go there. So there's a sense of urgency through this too. A little bit of a timeline, okay? The board gave Mr. Pransol the okay to start working up numbers again and verifying things, okay? But the board also now needs to take a final step and pass a resolution in March to go through with this. Then it goes to a meeting in April, okay, by the ORCC, which they put together, okay, and approved the master plan and so forth. And then finally, there's another meeting in May that they formally approve the whole project and things can roll. So that's very, very quick. Very, very quick. And it was a surprise to not only us, who've been working with the district, but the district itself. So you got a great opportunity. No bond issue, no new tax. Back in, back in two thousand and seventeen, there was an attempt to pass a bond issue, it didn't pass. But what was good about that? The state locked in your share. Your share is basically fifty-one percent, correct? Fifty-one percent, and the state pays forty-nine percent. So that plan, also, the master plan was locked in. And that means a K through twelve building. And you're in part of that process right here. And we'll talk about that in a little bit. The state share that you're getting will be a little over twenty-one million dollars, which is forty-nine percent of it. And the other money comes from local funds. If the plane, plan is changed, then your equity number or your share jumps to, or your, if the plan is changed, you drop to thirty-six percent, or the state share drops to thirty-six percent. So that means an additional approximately six million more dollars the local would have to come up with. And they don't believe they can do that, okay? So that's where we're at with that. Where is the local funds coming? They're coming from some grants, some other local funding. And you're gonna get, use some money from your power plant funding that you get. Okay, so it'll be a variety of sources to take care of that. They've worked hard with their financial advisor, consultant, and he says they got the funds. So it should work for you. Now, as we go through this, it's gonna be more of a little over a poll view. Hopefully, it prompts some questions in your mind, so use your cards. And one other thing I would mention, if you need more cards, raise your hand, okay? And we'll answer and try to deal with that later on. Okay, the building plan, all right? One of the things that it does here through a K through twelve is going to lower, okay, the total district square footage, which means you can operate a little more efficiently. And having been a superintendent for ten years, I know taxpayers, one of the things they always want school districts to do, their school district, is to operate as efficiently as possible. Don't waste my tax money. And I understand that. I've lived that. I respect that. And this will help that. Your K through twelve building, okay, is gonna be on this site. And you're gonna have separate wings. I know one of the concerns is always, oh, we have to go kids with the big kids. You're going to have three different schools under one roof. You're gonna have a K through five, a six through eight, and a nine through twelve. I was a middle school principal in a building that housed six through twelve. And it works. It does, it does really, really nice. So I don't think there's fears there. The K through five is gonna be a brand-new building. It's gonna be a new addition. So they're gonna be working with that. It's about eighty-two thousand square feet. So it's a nice-sized building where the K through five students will be. There will be some minimal shared spaces in the six through twelve building. And we're talking possibly cafeteria and maybe the art museum, those type of things. So there's efficiency in those type of things too. There's not duplication of effort going to happen. With this, especially like in this building, okay, you'll be able to upgrade your power, okay, and electric sources and so forth. So you're gonna be able to increase and upgrade your technology. And in today's world, if you, you know, and I do, I wanna say one thing too about the district, that you guys go on four days a week. And now I hear you're going five days a week. Personally, that's what kids need to be, okay? They need to be there. I have an eight-year-old grandson. And last spring, when they turned everything down, my wife was an educator and I was an educator. We ended up being teachers' gift, okay? He's eight years old. Remote learning doesn't work for these girls. They miss that social interaction, that emotional interaction. And it makes them much more healthier than they do. And now I got a five-year-old granddaughter. And they both talk about it. We gotta get rid of this stupid virus, okay? And we're getting closer. We're getting closer. So hopefully, that'll come soon. And one of the other things that we'll take a look at, okay, in this building and as we build a new one, is to make that, we have the latest and best security measures. And if we have to upgrade something, we will do that. As we all know, one of the key things that we want schools to be is a safe place for students. They feel comfortable coming. So security is always one thing that will be looked at.
Climate control.
Please?
Climate?
Oh, yeah. And maybe some of the most important, climate control equals air conditioning, okay? And if you ever gone to school, and I think most of us, I can remember going to school and you know air conditioning. I taught in that middle school too, where I began. And we had air conditioning in certain areas. You know something? My room didn't have it. You know, I think they just picked on me because they know I sweat pretty easily. So they just put some money in there. But it does make a difference. If the students are comfortable and the teachers are comfortable, education happens in a much better environment. Now, we've also worked with your staff members. In the fall of two thousand and nineteen, a couple of my colleagues, okay, from Fanning Howie came and spent a day here on one of the teachers' professional development days. And I do believe they met at the elementary in the afternoon and maybe in the middle school, high school, okay, in the morning. And what they did was try and get them involved and ask them questions about educational delivery, how they were delivering the education to your children, okay? And what they would really like to do if they had the right facilities, okay? So they spent a lot of time. It was very interactive. As you can see, people were involved, small roundtable discussions. And again, it's much better than these, these masks and things that we have to work here. And then they moved on. This was just, this was a dot exercise. And basically, one of the things they talked about and shared with the, the staff members was that you can have traditional classrooms or a traditional school, double O to quarters, okay, classrooms on both sides, that type of thing. You can have transitional, which is part of that. But then you expand to expanded learning areas where they can, students can get together in small groups, collaborate, those type of things. Or you can have transformational, okay? Which means it's a little more wide open altogether, okay? Red dots mean, just like the left side, don't want it. And if you look on the far left, that's the traditional, lots of red dots. Means they don't, the facilities they have, you do the best you can, but it's not what they're looking for. Okay? A lot of the green dots are between the transitional, which is a combination of the traditional and some new ideas. And then the transformational, which is a lot more open and delivers the educational, instructional delivery is much different. Okay? Go ahead, are you next? Yep. And Molly's gonna share a little bit.
Okay, so we wanna talk about the benefits of the K-12 facility. And I just realized I forgot to introduce myself. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Molly Caplet and I'm the curriculum director here at Rolling Hills. So why do we want one building? It's going to offer a lot of opportunity for our students and our faculty that will enhance our education here. One location brings all the opportunities to one area, including things like drop-off and pickup, any performances that we have, but also things like shared staff events, security with the resource officer being in one location instead of sharing with multiple buildings. There's no transition between buildings for students. We know that when kids move from K-two building to the three-five building, it's a whole new world. They have to learn all the procedures, where everything's located. And that can be kind of anxiety for students. That happens again when they transfer, transfer to six-eight. And it happens again when they come to high school. So if we're under one roof and we're all in the same area, then we're able to make those transitions smoother. Those will have the same type of scheduling, the same kind of processes. It will be under one roof to have seamless transitions. Also, collaboration and communication with staff and students will be so much more streamlined. Right now, having two K-twos, it's harder for our staff to be able to work together. We have to bring them to one location to do so, or they have to work virtually. If they're in one building, they'll have the time to communicate and collaborate to enhance the programming that they can offer to students. The same thing happens with a lot of our shared staff. We have staff that transitions every day from one building to the next, like our music program. Our music teachers transition from building to building. So they will be in one place to be able to offer that. So we won't have lost time and travel. So those things will increase educational opportunities. Another opportunity that will be increased is things like career technical education. Currently, we can't offer that at our six-eight building because of limited staff. But we do have the opportunities here at the high school. So if we're in one building and six-eight is close to those educational opportunities, they too can take part in things like vo-lag and some of the arts and the technical programs. So those will really widen those opportunities for those students. The better alignment across the district for programs, grade level alignment and vertical. One of the most important things in education is to make sure that the grade below understands what the grade above is going to be doing and vice versa. You have to know where kids are going. So if you're in the same building, that's a lot easier to have those conversations and to make sure that you're streamlined. So it will, it will fill some of the gaps that are very hard to fill between the different buildings. So we do our best to make that happen. But it's a lot easier if you're under one roof to make that happen. So you can have those streamlined conversations. Better student focus with climate control. If you've ever been in this building at the beginning of the year, any of our buildings, at the beginning of the year or the end of the year, it is extremely hot. And we know that when you're extremely hot, it's extremely hard to focus. So having that addition of climate control can help with that immensely. So we would be very excited about that. Updated equipment in labs. I'm a former science teacher and I could not say how much I would appreciate having extra outlets, places to plug things in, more availability for my technology to be plugged in and to be used. So with an updated building, because this entire high school would be renovated with additions added on it, with the addition for the K-five, we would have that upgraded technology to be able to do things like that. Our career technical labs would be updated. The science labs would be updated. So we'd have the equipment and the materials that we would need that we currently are doing our best with. But with new facilities, it would be very much improved. And finally, the Muskingham Valley Health Center is located over by Brook. And our students have the opportunity to use those resources. But it's a lot more convenient for the students on this campus. It does not help the students that see Crystal Visal as much. They can use it, but they have to have transportation to get here, where the people on, the students on campus have easy access. If we were in one building, we would have easy access for the entire district, staff and students, to be able to take the opportunity to use those health services. So there's lots of things that can be educationally beneficial to being in one building. That's just some of them. So what happens next? You heard Mark talk about the process for the funding. After that would take place, we will start a facility advisory committee. When you're looking up here, you can see the first thing says Facility Core Committee. That committee's already been put into place. And it's just made up of a small group of people that are just making sure that we are communicating with the community about what we know, which at this point isn't a ton. We just know what the project is. And making sure that we are able to relate that information. Those of you who took the survey, saw you were asked, would you be willing to be part of a committee? We had a huge response of people who said yes. So we will be choosing some people. The core committee will be choosing people from the community, staff members, students, administration, business members, to be part of that committee. And that committee will make sure that they will be working on the decisions. So what will the different facilities look like? We don't know that yet, okay? So those committees will be putting those things into place. Right now, it's a K-12 building, okay? So we have to do a lot of detailed work and that committee will help with that. That committee will also be reporting out to the community. All of this will be very transparent. It'll be posted on our website. And we'll make sure that everyone knows what's happening at each stage. So we'll have lots of those meetings. It'll take about a year to plan from the time that we have the funding secured. So one... So, once the funding is secured, those meetings will start, we'll start working with the architects, making the design. So, the only design that we have so far is this building. We know this building will stay and, but it will be redesigned. Some of the spaces will be exactly the same, like this auditorium will stay in place, but it'll be updated, okay? But so, a lot of places, we can move walls, we can do other things to make this a 6-12 building with an addition onto it. Okay? So, that's what we'll be working on. So, that's it. Um, we tried to cover everything that we asked you in the survey and we're trying to make sure that you're well aware of everything that we know up to this moment. So, if you still have questions, we ask that you raise your hand to get a card or hold your card up and we'll take your card and we will answer those questions to the best of our abilities. Thank you so much for your time.
I'll go ahead with the first part I got. Why does the state share drop if the plan is changed, the original plan?
Uh, is it my remark?
I'll, I'll take a second of that one. It will drop, okay? Because you're going to be, we're using, if you remember the slide, it says it's a two thousand seventeen master plan, okay? And that's the K-312. If we change it, okay? It drops because they come up with their equity number, equity number based upon student enrollment and valuation, district valuation. Okay? So, what has happened since then is your uh, student enrollment, I think, has dropped some, but your evaluation has gone up higher. So, you're a more wealthy district, okay, now than you were back in two thousand seventeen. And because you're more wealthy, according to the state's formula, you need to pay more, okay? And right now, it looks like that over the next few years, it's going to go the other way. Can you show them that one slide?
Yes, continue to increase every year.
Yes. Yeah, if you just look at this, and I'm thinking the first number there is
The year two thousand?
Two thousand eight on the far left. It was low, it went up a little, then it dropped, okay? And look what has happened to your evaluation over the years. It is continually climbing, okay? And thus, your rank has kept going up higher and higher. All right? So, and they project that it's going to continue to go higher for your district. So, the longer, quote, you kick the can down the road, the more expensive it's going to be.
Our ranking in two thousand seventeen was three hundred and five. Our ranking this year is three hundred and eighty-seven. So, we've dropped eighty-two places indeed for the money. So, that's, that changes that.
When we're talking about a plan, we're basically just talking K-12 in one building. The reason for that being, the state will not supply money to any building for renovation or building that has less than three hundred and fifty students. Seacrest does not have three hundred and fifty students. Visville does not have three hundred and fifty students. So, the state will not give us their share of the money for any building under three hundred and fifty.
Brook does not have three hundred and fifty.
And middle school is really close, right? You're like right on the line.
So, when you do that, our only alternative basically is to put the building side by side and connect them with the roof and then we qualify. Uh, the other question being, you know, design, that's going to be up to the committee. And when we're talking plan, we're just saying plan from two thousand seventeen to do this project. And we have to do it K-12. Even if we went with more than a K-12 building, the money we're getting from the power company would not pay the difference from what the state gives, it'd be much more expensive. So, to try to go to separate buildings, we're talking a lot more money. So, this is not only the most efficient way to do it, it is also uh, the way the state says we have to do it because of our building enrollment.
I'll go ahead with Molly. Are we taking out a loan with plant plans to pay it back with power plant funds?
Yes, we would be. Yes, we would be taking out a loan and pay it back. Um, we have a contract with the power plant. It has been looked at by several people that this is what they do for a living and it's secure enough that the state took that as, you know, we have half of our money.
Okay, my question from gentlemen over here is, what is the plan for the vacated buildings? Meaning Seacrest and Visville and?
That is a hundred percent up to the committee. Um, there's money in the plan from the state that we could demolish every building if the committee wanted to demolish a building. We can sell the buildings, we can use the buildings. Uh, we have not determined what we would do, that, that's going to be committee board
Will there be any additions to the athletic facilities such as separate gyms, expanded weight room, expanded wrestling room?
Again, there's not a set plan. We are discussing that and we're looking at stuff pretty much daily, trying to discuss what we can do. We realize right now, we have five buildings and five gyms in each building. We are looking, there will be more gym space added to this building. The current plan would have, the high school gym would be split, where that would be two gyms where two teams could be practicing, you know, after hours, and there would be a K-5 gym added.
I think that-
But we are looking at, we're in talks of trying to figure out adding another gym space also.
I think there's a little bit of confusion. The plan is simply, do we want to build, right? Do we want to build on one location, you know, this basic framework we've talked about? There aren't actually plans for, this is what it's going to look like, this is where rooms are going to be. Ideally, this is just to discuss, do we want to build a building? At that point, these committees will get together and talk about these specifics like gym space, how are classrooms going to be set up? You know, how do we want the buildings aligned so, you know, students aren't commingling across grades? This is strictly, strictly, do we want to do?
Yep, go ahead. Who pays if the power plant never starts up or goes under?
Um, again, they, I mean, we've been, I mean, I can't say guarantee, a hundred percent guarantee, no one can say a hundred percent guarantee, but, I mean, they, they did sign a contract, it's supposed to be paid. You know, if it sells or anything, that obligation goes with the power plant. So, I mean, we're guaranteed, they worked with Visville also, I mean, we've all been told the same thing. I mean, it, you know, if it sells and a different company takes over, that follows the power
Will preschool be included within the new schools? If not, where will preschool go?
We are having ongoing discussions about that. I would love for preschool to be in that K-12 building, that would be best. I mean, we are looking at every, every solution we can to include preschool into that, in that building. The state does not co-fund preschool. So, it's K-12. So, any additional square footage that would be added for preschool would be local dollars. So, we do have grants and stuff that I'm looking at daily, just got a call on my way here about they think another grant's coming that maybe could be used. So, we are looking, again, that's going to be committee and board decision, but, I mean, we have those ongoing discussions, I, I mean, that would be best, preschool to be in the building, to work with kindergarten, work with first grade, get them used to being in that building.
Once decided to be built, does the state dictate any of the plans?
Yes.
Certainly.
Yes, they have certain requirements that have to be followed for certain sizes, there's restrictions on certain things that we do have to follow according to state guidelines.
Otherwise, you give up that money.
Yeah, if you want their money, you have to follow their rules.
When this was built, they turned down the money for the auditorium, which is why we have a nice auditorium, not a cafeteria. But you have to make those tough decisions, you know, do we want to pay for that out of pocket or do we want to stick with their plan? And if you want to have a say in that, you need to get on this committee because they're the ones that are going to make the decision. Yeah, a lot of these questions like preschool, those are committee questions. This is just, do we want to, do we want to proceed with this?
Yeah, a lot of this goes back to those committee questions. This is mainly, do we want to proceed with this? And if that's preschool, something you're concerned about, you do want to be on these committees because you want to be, we want your voice heard, right?
And those are good questions because if you're here, you came to hear what it's about, we can tell you what we know, okay? But like, like we said, that committee's going to have a whole lot of work, okay? Working with architects, architects are going to share ideas, they're going to look at them, juggle around and go from there.
Yeah, it's a, a year-long process to plan. So, you would not break ground for at least a year, usually eighteen months. So, it takes a long time to make all those decisions before ground starts moving and will start coming down or going up.
What is the plan if once built, our student numbers increase?
The building's not designed to meet the actual number today, like that, that would be silly. Like, the, the OFCC has done this for a long time, they know about enrollment fluctuation. If you see that graph right there, they take into account many years of enrollment and by doing that, design the building based on that. So, they're not just taking into account one year, it's multiple years.
They do, they do enrollment projection, okay? And when they go to funding the project, they look at that projection, okay? And I always, as a superintendent, I thought, how are you doing that? They look at possible, you know, new homes and things like that. But you know something from them, most of those kids, they're not even twinkle in anybody's eye yet, you know? So, they take all these things and then project that. The OFCC then takes five years out, okay, from the time that, when they come up with it. So, they look at the enrollment projections, be it going down, be it going up, up and down like a roller coaster, but they go about five, because they do a ten-year projection and they go about five years. And that's what they base the square footage of the required building.
Molly?
I have a question.
With the new buildings, right now, we have people scattered out in a K-2, two K-2s-
Yes.
And then the middle school. Part of it is due to the pandemic right now, but we have some classrooms in our district that have eleven, twelve kids in them-
Ten.
And have three teachers, as low as ten. When you combine them into one building, you can even out the class sizes. That'll probably result in a lower staff because we've looked at the data and it's showing that we have a lot of teachers and staff members who have thirty years in right now. So, what we're projecting is, once the buildings are open, our staff will actually have smaller numbers. Uh, and we're hoping that that's done by attrition. But once we get into the buildings, if it's not done by attrition, then it'll have to be adjusted. Uh, so, I mean, part of the savings here is smaller staff also because the kids will all be in one place.
Efficiency.
Efficiency, yeah. But, you know, and we're hoping it goes by, we're hoping it goes by attrition. Uh, that's what the projection is. If it isn't, then, you know, we'll have to cut stuff. Uh, that's just the way it is, but by all indications, it should take care of itself.
I mean, the goal is, you know, ten, fifteen, even thirty years from now, you know, we still want to be in good shape, we still want to be able to get staff raises, we still, you know, we want to be the district that people want to come to. I mean, this is how we see, I mean, if we can get our buildings where they need to be, where, you know, we don't have major repairs that need to be done, we get staff the size we need, then, you know, we'll have money for the increase in insurance and increase in salaries over the years.
But we want everyone to be aware that, you know, that's a possibility if you're to have that. I don't understand.
But I mean, as a board, we want to make sure everybody understands that, yeah, it's going to take less staff to run this new building. And we should be all right with that, but we also want you to be aware that that might happen. We don't want that to surprise anybody if it doesn't, but that's part of the efficiency of building the new buildings. And to build on what he's saying, what he means by attrition is, we have an aging staff in some areas. So, right now, we do have classrooms with ten students in them, but as our older staff members retire, we won't fill certain positions, we'll combine others should you decide to go this route. So, the thought is, you would not have to let anyone go if things work out as they're projected. Now, of course, that's a big if, but that's part of this decision. You know, there is a chance that job, you know, jobs would have to be cut if those people do not retire. But we are an aging staff and we think that will take care of itself.
Uh, we do want to remind you that if you are interested in being part of that facilities advisory committee and you did not submit your information in the survey, that you please write your name and contact information, email and phone number is best for us, um, and then give it to one of our admin so that we have your names and we can contact you. Now, obviously, we can't have all two hundred and fifty people that have said yes, that would not work. And you can't make decisions with two hundred and fifty people, but we'll try to make sure we have a nice representation from all areas.
How often will we meet?
Uh, how often will we meet? Um, that will be dependent on what decisions need to be made. At the beginning, quite a bit. Once, once we know the directions, Mark can tell you more because he's done this.
Right. With the advisory council, okay, we would generally probably say at the beginning, maybe once a month, okay, to get some ideas and go, we'll, we'll do a lot of, how do you want to call it? Data collection, getting ideas and things like that. And then we have to put it together in a presentable way and then we bring it back and we throw, throw it back to that advisory committee. This is what's been said, those type of things. Okay? As you get further into the project and we come up with, quote, a plan, well, then it takes a little bit of time for architects to do the drawings and things like that. So, it might be six to eight weeks between, okay? But I will tell you, okay, uh, generally, our philosophy at Fanning is we need as much as needed, okay? And we will, you know, we'll have communication with committee members and we will be there, okay? I think, uh, yes, that's generally where we work things.
And we wanted to remind you that the committee is students, teachers, administrators, parents, business members, community members, okay? We're not going to leave anybody out.
And senior citizens.
And senior citizens, that's community. They live in the community.
And the, and the big thing is too, with that committee, we're going to, it's not going to be overrun by educators, okay? We generally, we generally make a suggestion that there's less than fifty percent and around forty percent educators, the rest of it's community members. So, quote, educators aren't ramrodding everything through, okay? They're part of that committee.
Shelley? All right, Mark, this one I noticed for you because you know the size of this. Um, so what size are the classrooms?
Okay, the classrooms according to the OFCC are nine hundred square feet, okay, for the regular classroom. And I, what I was going to mention, OFCC over the years, my first OFCC then was a, it was called the Ohio School Facility Commission, OSF-C, back in ninety-nine, okay, when I helped pass the bond issue, okay? And it was, only came into effect in nineteen ninety-seven. What is written in black and white, that's what we had to follow. We tried to argue with them and knew that's not what we're doing. And when I look at it now in hindsight, I understand why. You're just starting a program, you're spending millions of dollars through the state of Ohio, you can't be too variant. Now, if you have a legitimate reason you're bringing up, they will listen to you. Doesn't mean you're buying your argument every time, but they will listen to you. One of the variances they will make on the regular classroom is that they generally drop it, they can drop it up to ten percent. Set to nine hundred, you can have eight hundred, ten. Now, for science labs, okay, if they're new, okay, they're like twelve hundred square feet, all right? So, you get uh, uh, preschool, or getting preschool, getting our first grade, they're twelve hundred square feet.
They have a bathroom.
They have bathrooms.
They have a bathroom to be co-funded by the state.
So, there, there are different things at different levels, but that's basically the size of it.
And just so you know what size that is, most of the classrooms at Brook are nine hundred square feet. So, if you can kind of, if you remember. Yeah, and that's, that's what was going to read that next one.
Oh, how many students is that?
No, how many students are wanting to know? No, how many students, I'm wanting to know, would be in a classroom?
Oh, I mean, the typical, I think, what does our contract say? We try to have no more than twenty-five in a classroom, and we will do everything in our power to keep it at that. I mean, it depends on the size of the class, but, yeah.
I know, and you said there are, some classrooms will pen, which I understand is a low number, but.
We try to maximize.
Yeah, our, we try max at twenty-five. Yeah, no, that's not guaranteed, and it can't happen all the time, but, yeah, I don't think we have anything.
Typically, we don't get near it.
In the nine years I've been here, there's only been one class that I've ever had more than twenty-five, and they are now seniors. Yeah, and the state-based funding on twenty-five kids per class is how the state comes up with the number also. So like the materials, like we'll get desks and, you know, things like that, you get a class set of twenty-five. Any other questions? These have been great. We want to be as open and honest with everything that we can tell you, so that you're part of this discussion and part of this journey.
Would anybody else like a card to put your name and phone number and stuff to be contacted to be on the committee? If you do, I have extra cards here, and there's obviously some on the table out there to be done.
Any other questions or? Okay, if you need a card, are there some still out there?
Yeah, they're still some.
There's still some out there, you're welcome to leave your name and contact information. If you want to drop your pen off in the bucket on your way out, we'll clean it and reuse it next time.
Okay, we need to officially adjourn. Before I do that, if you have any questions, you can call any of the board members. We'll answer anything that we can. If not, we'll get you the answer, and then we'll check with them.
And you can, you can call the board members. I've got business cards. You can come up and grab one of mine, I've got my cell number on there, and I've got my email address on there. So you can contact me if you want to contact.
You can contact central office.
Call, call the central office and ask them all they can. And, because I know what's going to happen. You're going to go home, you're on the way home driving, you're going to say, dang, I wish I would have asked that question. Right now, when you get home, their email addresses are on the web, okay? The school district website, hit it there and send it to me.
Now, they expect any other administrators to, you can walk and contact us.
Yeah, just contact someone, and we'll get back to you with the answer.
Just keep asking until you get an answer.
That's correct.
Next, we do have to vote on this in March, so there is a limited timeframe that we need to act on this. It came on us all at once, because the last time I met with the state, they told me twenty twenty-two before they'd ever think about giving us any money. And that's changed, so that's why we are where we are. We're going to adjourn the meeting. If there are any of the new student reps here, you're, you're with your parents, Mr. Humphrey would like to speak to you after the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Got a motion, I have a second.
Who is Mike?
Mike.
It's Mike, Brandon.
And Brad.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Dutra?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.